Go ahead and start. Don, if you don't care, if you'll need some prayer.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you, Lord. We humbly bow before you, Lord, to thank you for your blessings. God, we just thank you for loving us and helping us and for everything that you've done for us. We're so thankful for it. Thank you for these positions that we have. And we ask, Lord, as we go into the meeting, you'd just be with us, just guide us in our decisions, and help us to do the things that would be pleasing to you, Lord. And we ask now, Lord, that you bless all the sick people out there. We don't want to skip that. We know we've got a lot of sickness in our area, and pray that you'll just be with them and comfort them and heal them if it can be your will. Ask now, Lord, that you'd go with us through this meeting, guide us and direct us, and forgive us where we fail you, and we give you the praise for it all. In Christ's name and prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Plagues and agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, need a motion to call the meeting to order.
Motion.
Tabby. Second, second. Kevin. All in favor? Item number two, need a motion and a second to cover only what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Yep.
Eugene. All in favor? Item number three, reading of the minutes from three eleven. Arnold.
The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on March eleventh, two thousand nineteen at six P. M. Mayor Culber asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Don Marlowe to call the meeting to order. Police Chief Jeremy Marbit led everyone in prayer. Then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Culber stated the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Don Marlowe to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The mayor asked the clerks to read the minutes from the February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting. After reading, it was discovered that there was not enough council members to accept the minutes, therefore the clerk will read them again at the next meeting. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement for them to look over and to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Wickenden to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The clerk also presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to review and to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Wickenden to pay all bills when due. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The mayor and council went back to some old business and discussed getting some quotes on repairing the heating and air at the radio station. Clark feature is the only quote received at the time, and the mayor was going to try to get a quote from Eddie Randolph. The rec center job was discussed and in some old business. The mayor wants to check with you, who is meant to make sure that he isn't interested in continuing with his job. If so, we will need to post his job. Jessica Pruitt was in attendance and addressed the mayor and council about using the rec center for a consignment sale. The sale will take place April fifth through the tenth and April twelfth through the fourteenth. This will be very big for our community. It will bring in people from other cities. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Lally to allow Jessica to use our facility for this sale. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The equipment in the vault restaurant was discussed. The mayor is in favor of an onsite auction instead of sealed bids. The buyer would pay the premium. We need to get an auctioneer and set a date for this to take place. Also, a reserve needs to be set on the equipment. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Don Marlowe to approve on an onsite auction. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. Missing street signs were discussed. There were so many that the mayor stated that it would be best for us to send a fourth of the names to the nine-one-one office at a time for them to make until all are done. All council members were in agreement. The mayor and council discussed the certified letters that were sent out pertaining the cleanup ordinance. Some of the individuals didn't receive a first letter, therefore each one has been given an extra thirty days for the cleanup to be done. Town Attorney Tony Quinn will send another letter advising them that they will have more time. The mayor and council discussed getting quotes for repairing or repainting their storm shelters. They are rusting pretty bad. According to the company that installed the shelters, Aqua Marine Enterprises, they should be repainted every three years approximately. This company is preparing a maintenance contract for the mayor and council to look at. At this point, we need to get processed on a one-time paint job. The mayor and council asked for an update on Bill Leprad and his signing bonus to be repaid to the town. Tony Quinn, town attorney, stated that Mr. Leprad had contacted his secretary and told her that he would be sending the money back to the town. Chief Jeremy Marbit wanted to discuss hiring a new police officer. He recommended hiring Steve Boygan, who has applied for the job and has all his certifications up to date. He and his wife are willing to move to Hackleburg, and he will sign a contract. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Wickenden to hire Mr. Boygan. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The mayor asked for an update on reimbursement from the police academy for Tyler Norton. Tyler is in the top five applying for the Muscho's Police Department. They've hired the M. S. P. D. We'd pay for his contract with us, and if not, we will have to go back to the state to get our money. The mayor and council discussed the old graveling mower used by the street department. It doesn't have compression enough to cut grass. The mayor asked for approval to get prices on purchasing any mower. All was in favor of this. The mayor and council discussed bidding off old equipment not needed anymore. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Wickenden to put these items on govdeals.com. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Don Marlowe to adjourn.
Y'all heard the reading of the minutes? Is there any questions on additions, deletions?
I got two or three. I was about to get to reading last time. What about Mr. Whiz, the MVP?
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
What was it you asked?
Mr. Whiz, the MVP. Do that. And then what about the stuff to ball? Where we at on that stuff?
Tony, did I talk to you or Scott Hunt? I asked if they thought we would be able to get permission to get in there, to have the auction?
I think it was Scott that you had talked to. I know I had heard what you're saying, but I think Scott is representing her.
Yes.
And he thought it would be okay, but we need to... Would a judge act okay that, or could the attorneys? Attorneys could agree, and that'd be the better way to do it.
Okay. That's what we need to do.
I would think Scott would agree.
Yeah, he was okay with it, and I don't know who the other party, which Scott represents the building owner.
Right. And the town has a perfected security interest in those items inside, so I don't see how you can argue with that.
I'll follow up on that.
For auctions, I more recommend using Allen Knott, local auctioneer. He's gonna do it.
Yeah. Yeah, he said he would. Buy him straight down.
What about the guy that we hired? You know, he had a tragedy in his family, and he... I'm gonna play it, fellas.
We are waiting on him. Have we heard anything else? Tony on payback on the five thousand?
I have not heard. I may have misstated, but at the last meeting, I said that he was waiting on his taxes. He was going... He left a message at the office that that was gonna come out of his retirement.
Well, that's what he originally had to say.
Yeah. And I said it was taxes last time, but it was out of his retirement. And I have not heard.
If you get a chance this week, could you touch base with him again or try to?
I would... I have sent him another letter, you know, the one that... The first one I sent, he didn't pick up.
You know, we don't wanna... We're just gonna do what we gotta do to recover our...
We've got to do it for posterity's sake, for future. Because if we're gonna do this, we gotta let him know that we're gonna really collect it.
And we've already, I think it was on here, but we've already... Steve has already signed his contract for the next... We hired him, so he's tied in.
You know, Tyler Norton's in that bucket, too.
Tyler got on at Muscho's, so...
He has been hired at Muscho's, so...
They're gonna reimburse his fifteen or whatever.
They said they would if they hired him.
So we might get Tony to look into that.
We need to, because we don't need to wind up and deal a lot of these grants, pass this and that and another.
We probably need to have Jeremy or Carl one call him before our attorney and give him a chance. And then if they...
I'll get him tomorrow. I'll talk to him tomorrow and tell him.
Well, let me ask this. Since he signed the contract, he's liable for that money, not each one of these individuals that he transfers to. So the letter should be really sent to Tyler, correct?
Correct.
And because Tyler signed the contract, and when he went to the county, he would be responsible for that money and that contract. So the letter needs to go to Tyler and quit going through all these other people.
Standard procedure is to go through the department that hired him, but yeah, I agree. We probably need to...
But he's already been hired by two other companies, and it's been going on for two years.
Not that long, but it's been going on.
It should go to him and him.
That's right.
Make sure it gets paid.
It doesn't take it long to get our money from Lee, but anyway.
Well, I think Tyler would be in a position to aggravate him about giving us some pleasure.
Yeah, if he thought he had to pay it.
Yeah, I think he'd get paid.
Which he would if it comes down to it.
No.
What about bidding off any of our equipment?
Well, we need to decide. We're gonna seal bids and put it on govdeals.
Want to see us? I think put it on govdeals, just like we've done with the rest of the money thing. It's on later. Been a while since.
You'll come to your settlement.
Who's gonna take that responsibility and get it posted on govdeals is the only thing you gotta do. It's already been agreed upon to put it on there.
What else have we got? Have we got lists? Do you know what we're talking about?
Several items. From Bushog to Trambers to...
Yeah.
All different stuff.
He hasn't been doing it. Kenny, you think everybody have time now? We've got twelve and...
Adam graduated tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll put him back to four, Count Neil, so I might bring him up a little bit. I guess I'll talk to him and see. I know he's been wrapped up with just two of them. I'll contact him, well, Councilwoman Lally, and see if he thinks he'll be able to, since Adam's graduating. Because that's gonna get him... He'll have three of them in. I'll free him up a little bit more than Kenny had been.
As far as the rec center? She'll be out. Well, it'll end on the fourteenth to give her time to get out. I would say open it back up to the public on the twenty-ninth of April. What do you think?
It's all right. Yeah. It'll be the weekend after Labor Day is one of those.
I really don't wanna move that again like it's been done. So I find it Monday.
She's having... That'll give her... Well, I'm thinking of her time, being honest. She's having that sale that weekend of Labor Day also.
Pay that for profit, but anyway.
She ain't doing it Labor Day.
I bet she was.
She's not doing that Labor Day. It'll be over. So the fourteenth, it'll end.
The sale's on mail. She had one this weekend. She's had one next weekend, too.
Yeah. So if we wait till the twenty-ninth, it'll be...
It'll be a lot different. As if I could other deal, anybody can get a booth and sale, or it's just her stuff.
It's not hers. It's people bring it in for consignment.
Yeah, she's handling it.
She handles all of it, and then it divides the money.
Right, she gives it over. Lord have mercy, they have three trucks loading it today.
We did a motion. We did a motion to open on the twenty-ninth.
Well, we need a motion to get the minutes.
Probably not through questioning yet. What about the signs? How we coming along?
I have not seen them two there. Did you think nine-one-one would?
Yeah.
No doubt.
Yeah.
I think gone. They done. You done got well, didn't you? Put your feet in the park.
I'll get a quarter, a third of them, two of them.
Now, there's a sign over Stone Hill House below me. If they painted black. If they have a rec area, they gonna blame us for it.
Is that a new one, or?
I don't know, but it's all painted black, so you can't do it. It stops.
You put that one at the top, yeah.
What, you know what she said is?
Took off the cover white, renewed it.
Is that our map?
Hit straight there.
Yeah.
No.
Georgia Street.
Georgia.
It's one of the hill limits right down by me. There are tip stops there.
That project still being... There was the project been completed yet? That was... Darren was asking.
What project?
Right beside the water tower, that big hole that was supposed to be concreted with a cover pad on it.
No, it's not.
I know it's been raining a lot, but we need to get that. Especially, that needs to be done before Labor Day.
Yeah, last meeting, we had somebody come to us and say they would help our employees do it, but we decided we'd already bid it out, so we probably need to go with that bid.
Right.
Hopefully, anytime they'll be up there.
Like Munchkin said, meetings exist, there is no more place.
We did purchase a new mower, too. Eighty-eight hundred and seventy-five bucks. That's what all the municipalities...
Give you everything that's planned.
Have a coffee.
Yeah, you can have any of them. All right. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes. Need a motion to accept the minutes of March eleventh? Yep.
Eugene, you and Kevin have to abstain from the show right here.
Motion.
Second.
Tabby and Don. All in favor? Everybody. All right, Carla, item number four, reading the minutes of March twenty-fifth.
The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen at six P. M. Mayor Culber asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. A motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Don Marlowe to call the meeting to order. Alabama House District Seventeen Representative Tracy Estes led everyone in prayer in the pledge. Pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Culber stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Marbit to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the February twenty-fifth meeting, and after reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Marlowe to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The clerk also presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to review and approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe, seconded by Councilmember Marbit to pay all bills when due. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. Ms. Audrey Freeman with Avenue Insights, or RDS, was in attendance to present a contract that is up for renewal. This contract will be for three years, and the amount they retain for collecting has been lowered from one point eight five percent to one point five percent. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to approve this contract renewal. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. David Ray with the Youth Baseball League addressed the mayor and council about the annual donation given to them. This year, the league has changed back to Dixie Youth and has new leadership. Jonathan Oliver has taken over as president, with Jason Pope vice president, Chris Randolph as secretary, and David Ray as treasurer. David was asking about the five hundred dollar donation given to the league each year. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to approve the five hundred dollars. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The mayor and council discussed changing our polling place because of the radio station being in an old place. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Marbit to pass Resolution HPP seven, Marion County Precinct seven, from the recreation center to the senior building on railroad. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. The lighting on Field Two of Heath Bob Hudson Park was discussed by the mayor and the council. Mayor Culber wanted to thank the volunteers who worked on this project. He stated that in most cases, the cost of this would have been close to one hundred thousand dollars, but the town only spent ten thousand dollars because of the volunteer work and donated materials. Chief Marbit wanted to discuss with the town about the town sending him to classes that he needs to get in this year. There will be a conference in August on May twenty-first through the twenty-second, and also the chief's conference in July at Orange Beach that he would like to attend. In order for the council to vote on this, we will have to table until the next meeting due to two council members being absent. The mayor and council discussed maintenance option for the safety shelters in town. The builders of the shelters, Aqua Marine, has sent a maintenance plan to the mayor for him and the council to consider. It was decided that this should be tabled until another meeting when all was in attendance. An update on the cleanup ordinance properties was discussed. A second notice was sent to Mr. Denson and other property owners that stated they had an additional thirty days to have their property plan. A motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Marbit to go into executive session. After returning, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to come back into regular session. Councilmember Kevin Marlowe wanted to discuss about an open water box by Doug Jackson's home. This box has a board over it, but needs a lid fixed on it. Doug Beard and Jason Giewin with the water department should be notified to get this repaired. Labor Day two thousand nineteen was discussed. The clerk updated the mayor and council about where we stand. There is still a lot of work to be done, and it will take everyone working together to make this happen. The graveling grade list was discussed. The only name on the list is Heather Tidwell. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to gravel and grade said drive. Voting was as follows: all ayes, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to adjourn.
All right. Heard the reading of the minutes for March twenty-fifth. Any questions or comments?
We'll get approval from the commissioner of the mowler following play for that.
Yeah, I have not yet. Have they had a meeting yet?
They made the same as we do, don't you second?
From this morning?
Yeah.
Brooke didn't call all night. I'll call tomorrow.
Look, you called and putting on my agenda.
Yeah, it's responsibility again. On the painting on the safety shelters, we've had a local guy that wants to give a bid on it. I mean, he's a good painter. He painted the water towers and...
Yeah, but that was more than painting. That was for total maintenance, for the reason hinges and all that.
One of the, I think we got a list.
I don't know what we discussed. It'll be more than just painting with total maintenance.
There is a sheet in there.
Cleaning the mold and all that, changing filters.
One of them was, yeah.
I think we need to go with that myself. Don't think it looks at the meters.
Well, we can discuss that when we get there.
Is it on the new business?
Yes, because I've got some questions on that. Actually, it's on the old business.
Now, rather than her having to write it up all the way over to May, we always send our chief to them meetings, and he always goes to their conference, so I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and approve.
It's on here, too.
It's on there, too.
Oh, is it on the other? Well, I know he's discussing this, and that's the way it is.
Well, there is one thing, Carla, when we went into executive session, it should read to discuss good name and character. You'll note that. Somebody's calling.
And what about the man all over by Doug that they didn't look at?
That should be the water department. We'll look at it.
Someone has it all done now, like Mr. Bonner was saying.
Need a motion to accept the minutes of March twenty-fifth?
So moved?
Done. Second.
You can't second.
All in favor? Item number five, financial statement. Have the lights or the softball field come out of the general bar?
Now, we still should have, I think, seven left in the shop over there. We need to make sure that... Until, because it's still too wet to get out there in outfield, because we can't drive the truck across field. So that's the reason we got them once on the side. It's completed, and it's actually bitted up pretty good. You know, they can do T-ball and six and under and eight and under. You know, they can do T-bone, six and under, eight and under.
Did we decide to pay that out of the capital improvement or the general fund?
I think it was capital improvement, so I was gonna transfer the money back into the general.
Need a motion to accept the financial statement.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody? Item number six, pay the bills.
Well, we haven't done it back.
Uh, the tile had to be worked on.
Yeah, they get it fixed.
Yeah.
What they said wrong, if you don't remember?
Uh...
I forgot right there. Only time we go in. Which I think, well, it's not been too bad, that's not good, but...
Can't even remember what he said. But anyway, yeah, they got it took care of.
What about Herman's period? I still don't understand why we're using gas car. He takes it though?
Yeah, some of our part-time don't have it.
Some part-time, but Doc fills up for the van. I guess that's, it looks like probably most of that would be his.
I mean, fire would put any of the car, which is usually one time.
We ain't got a car issued, do you or Carla in there that could get?
Uh, I mean, they do, but it's still the same thing.
Which we don't necessarily know, I actually don't miss it, I ain't saying the statement, so yeah.
Really, keep up with the better.
I meant to put a statement in this time and I didn't put it in.
Oh, that's fine.
It was eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, I believe, this time.
But is that working out better than like? I give me to keep up with, it looked like.
They want you.
Tiny, that's something else, like, oh, there's a gas tank, I don't want to go back to old business, but he's telling me to put stuff on go, you know, and we said we were gonna fill that pump and all that. What about O'Reilly Batteries?
Uh, if I ain't mistaken, the four fifty-four? There's several things, there's small stuffs.
There's several invoices on there.
Well, and I guess that's the street stuff, isn't it?
Yes.
It's the wrong. And I guess that way, except for gas cars.
That's the gas cars.
And I guess, we still pay the water department's uniform, they reimburse it.
If they ain't, we need to look that, Carla, because sometimes it's creeping back up.
We do. We always would pay it and then they...
Put it back.
Um, on theirs, I don't have it in here with me, but it's on there this week.
Somewhere.
Anyway, we can show it on our report each time that they pay.
I could just make you a copy of what we've done, I guess.
Yeah, that'd be okay.
On the overall financial, I don't know, we already done some, but we're still showing to the fire department and we're also showing the water department on expenditures coming out, which can also cause our overall net income to go in the red. If you look on the last page. So, when are we gonna take that out of here, because that should be in their own budget?
Well, they can, uh, we can reimburse us, you know, from the, from the fire. Man, he's been helping me and I, and she hadn't, she not used to that, you know, taking it and putting it in the fire yet, I guess.
Yeah.
This has been, you know, since I had surgery, but that fire and...
Even their insurance and, like, for the water department, because you're up to seven thousand dollars, you know.
Uniforms, water, that's where they're supposed to be reimbursed back to us. That amount is.
Well, it's alright if you do reimburse it, but it's gotta show as a revenue, and it's not showing as revenue in here.
Well, that's not, that's where it was taken and the expense was put in there. And when the revenue comes back, it's gonna show, um, water board income on the front. I'd have to make y'all a copy of everything that's in that.
Yeah, because what I was looking at was the total amount of expenditures just on their insurance year to date and already six thousand dollars in the water board income is only year to date, it's three thousand. So if we start adding all those expenses left that they're coming at, that numbers should balance equal.
Well, it should by the end of the year.
Yeah.
It might just not be caught up yet.
They're for the longest, you know, they didn't have me, they had us paying the water's insurance and nobody had ever said anything about it, which is not right to be done that way.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't pay for either stuff.
The thing about it is too, is it's all billed here, so it's easier to pay the whole bill and then reimburse back from the water department.
Yeah, as long as we make sure we get it back and stuff.
Looks to me like it'd be simpler just fix it where you could write a check to the water board to pay theirs and the fire department to pay theirs. He would write the check out.
The bill goes, the bill is one thing.
I'm talking about as far as leaving it completely off of our paperwork. And you pay the...
You don't have to.
It's still gonna be there if you leave it off the paperwork.
It's still gotta be on balance.
Not if she writes a check to pay the fire departments and she writes a check to pay the water departments. Do they break that down for you to where you know?
No, I have to, I have to split it out myself.
All we have to look at is what this total value is.
But I have a spreadsheet that splits out.
Oh, make it simpler for everybody.
Pay the water departments, sell the water department, pay the fire department, out of the fire departments.
And it's billed separately.
You'd have to have a, the fire department's gonna have a counter for that.
No, they don't. She'll do it. Well, she can do it the same way she's doing it, other than separate, separate it up. We don't have to change, I'm just saying it, to be simpler, it looks to me like that'd be the simplest way you can do it.
The Northwest, they do bill it to the fire department and we just need to get into that.
Just do it like you want to.
But, but the insurance is big from the state.
Something ain't nothing gonna be changed.
Well, we've already accepted the financial statement for the cell. Any more questions on paying the bills?
Motion, pay bills?
Said you done barked a long morning.
Yes.
Second.
I just gave you a copy of the bills. Tabby and Kevin? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opinions? Alright, topics to discuss, old business, item number one, I'm digging on the Denson building. You know, if he picked up his letter, Tony?
He did. And we're in that, we're probably, I don't know, a few days into that thirty days. He, he promptly got it back. And he is one person that got back on that second one.
Well, it doesn't hurt anything.
So we're, we're in that thirty day timeframe, he's got to respond or do something?
We're willing to, I, I would say we're eight to ten days in. He, he got his letter back the fastest of anybody.
Maybe he's gonna...
I'm, I'm hoping that's a sign that he's gonna comply.
Yeah, I really.
Sell it or tear it down or something?
Are there any other letters out there besides that one at the time?
They, they're all back. Everybody picked their letter, that second letter up, that got them back.
Most everybody, I think, pretty much took care of what they needed to.
Most everybody. Still I saw it here in town.
Yeah, he, he, yeah. Anything else on that? Item number...
Well, yeah, there are a lot of them. Like, say if we, if we do have one of these places to turn in, do we wanna call that in to Carla, put it on there, or just give, you know, give it to Carla? Or how do we, how do we do that, like?
Yeah, I mean, you know, let it snow.
I've had somebody tell me of one this weekend, but I haven't mentioned it.
Yeah, I, I overlooked the one I was getting complaints about.
Denson thing, so let's follow through with that just a little bit. He, we end up at the end of thirty days, Tony, and nothing's happened.
Right.
What's next?
Well, we'd love to take some kind of leak last year, you get, get him cleared or that.
Okay.
The time before, when he didn't do anything, he was summoned to come to court. And he had to appear and so did Ms. Rayburn.
Good.
And they had, they both paid fines of right at five hundred dollars apiece.
Can, can we up them fine amounts?
We probably can't this time, but I mean, we can next time.
Well, we put them up there where it's way above the value of tearing it down. The fact.
Twenty-five hundred, five thousand.
Yeah, about five or ten thousand dollars, and he'll either pay the fine or he'll tear it down, whatever cheap. Perfect.
Just paying the fine, don't clear him up.
No.
That just gets him.
Gets somebody up thirty days.
Then the next thirty will be jailed. There's rights to that.
Tony, is it not correct, the third offense is jail time? Is that, that's the way the policy's wrote?
I think so.
So he is, he is operating on his third time.
Yes.
So he has to make it...
We don't do good on this third time.
He's operating on his second time. His third one will result in a fine, and then anything after that could result in jail time.
And he knows all that.
He's been through it.
And so by us doing this, though, what I'm saying is everybody out there gets a very fair...
What, sure.
To, you know, it's not like something we just passed put together.
Well, y'all did a list and y'all was on here eight years ago, so he's had more than enough time, I think.
I need to make sure.
But, but the difference is now, is we're keeping good records now. He's keeping the documentation, because if you don't have documentation, and, and it didn't happen.
Well, it's been pursued too.
So now we've got a trail.
It's been pursued.
As long as we got a paper trail, we can proceed forward.
You can take to the judge.
That's the rule.
It'll work.
Well, we've had a paper trail before, but he would come up here and work on it.
Like you're speaking.
Satisfied.
Yeah, whoever.
He would need it to and...
Well, it's satisfied, it's a brand new roof, anyway.
Let's put some tape in that thing, yeah. We, we, next time, it'll be closed for thirty days, next time we leave.
Yes.
Yeah, our next meeting, we'll be well into.
But the orders, it's, it's the same orders we had before, it's very easy to understand, nobody, you know.
Nothing's...
Anybody that cared, cared about town would wanna clean that place up. My gosh.
I just, you know, I should people here, you know, I think. Just let everybody understand, it's very fair, I mean, and I, it is fair, because I mean, actually we're bidding for them, because if you look at everybody that's followed or didn't follow through, they wasn't very much that they had to worry about, you know.
Well, somebody like that, I, I would be unfair, I'm about to be unfair again, but they could get done.
Well, he's, they know, they, they wanna do it, yeah.
The danger of where it's at for women and kids, things like that, getting in there, so it goes on and on. It's also mosquitoes and rats, snakes, everything else that, so. Brand new town with a few places in town that just need straightened out. New roads. Costs all that money to do all this stuff in middle town, that does look good.
Item number two, approve Chief Marbit to attend the conference at Auburn on May twenty first and twenty second. And also the chief's conference in Orange Beach in July. Do you have any process in mind?
I'm sorry, my process is, he didn't, he didn't tell me.
Yeah, she's been here.
What's the difference in these calls?
And lastly...
The one at Auburn is to pick up certain...
Classes.
That he has to have.
He's gotta have a certain day.
And the chief's conference is just in Orange Beach.
He had to go stay up too.
You have to keep your...
With only two full-time officers Jeremy has missed.
He's been missing in that.
Yeah, that he needed to get.
Yes, he was gonna make it go to the Auburn. The chief's conference is usually two fifty and then rooms.
I guess we're looking at usually eight hundred to a thousand on that one.
I don't think it's that much, but it, I don't know how many days, is it four days? Yeah, I think it is, yeah. I'm trying to remember that Auburn conference, since I think it's seventy-five dollars.
Well, he's gonna have them, so...
Yes.
Anyway, need a motion to approve Jeremy to attend the conference at Auburn in Orange Beach.
Aye.
Darren? Second.
Sir.
Tabby? All in favor? Any opinions?
No, I'm staying in, yeah.
You do stay in.
Item number three, discuss maintenance options on safety shelters in town. In your folder, you've got the maintenance plan options, if anybody wasn't here to look over.
Where's other bid, you just told me to paint it?
He, he hadn't put in a bid, I just told him we'd decide tonight if we wanted to accept one of these or if we wanted to make a bid.
What I think we may do, if we're gonna take bids, lay out what we want done in total package, I mean, if it's pressure clean, water brush, it's painted, grease the hinges, check for mold, everything we did done, lay it out, and then propose that to him and say, right here is what we want, give us a bid on total package, and then we go from there. That's what I think we need to do.
This right here is his one-year contract. Is this a monthly deal where they'll come out here and inspect it monthly, or is this a one-time deal?
It is a one-time, one-year contract.
So all they're gonna do is come in here and perform this work one time and then they done it? That seems a little bit excessive, okay. Is that for both of them, or is that first shelter?
That's for one.
That's for one.
I won't propose that we get another bill, with the assumption they'll do all this stuff too.
This is the company that built them and installed them.
Of course, we got an outline right here, you could just run it off and marry down, and when we take bids, there up there is what we gotta be doing, what you try, correct?
Yep.
Well, I'm gonna see.
It is, but the biggest thing we need is to get it painted.
Well, we're looking at twenty-three hundred and ten dollars to get it painted by that first contract. So we need to find out, if we're gonna do that, find out what he's gonna charge us to paint. And see how we come out there.
Because if we use the other guy you're talking about.
Fifty-nine hundred versus thirty-five hundred and ninety, less the paint.
Yeah, that's not, ain't no way it costs that much.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the others just look at some maintenance on it.
Well, once you do it, once you put the initial paint back on it, if you don't maintain it in-house, it's gonna get back in the same shape anyway. So, I mean, the, the shelters have been here for eight years, we've done zero maintenance on them, and so that means we're gonna have to start setting up something.
Well, we, we have been.
Also to maintain it.
We've maintained the shelters, but we have not maintained the paint.
The exterior part.
Like, the generators and all this, if we get all that. Yeah. We also backfill them, we thought we supposed to, and we don't supposed to backfill.
Well, you can, it is an option, you can, but they really prefer you don't. You can burn them up like we did, but they.
So everything.
If they repaint it, they want it removed.
And we'll have to do that.
So everything from four down's been getting done every year, rest of it, all of that.
Uh, Steve and Chad.
Cause I thought we discussed this last week, the big discussion was they needed to check about the dirt, some mold, and service the generator and all that, but now, so that don't need to be done?
Well, I mean, they, they can't, I'm just saying, that's part of it, if we are, then they'll do it.
I know, the last week, that was your big selling point, that, besides the paint, that thing.
Selling point, it don't matter to me if we use them or anybody, we just gotta get our painting.
Well, what I'm saying is, last week, it was, we needed total maintenance, this week, it's just, we need paint, I don't understand the swing in them.
I'm with, I'm with whatever y'all wanna do.
But I'm just trying to figure out, you know, does this need done, or doesn't it, you know, that's.
Well, it never hurts to maintain it, do maintenance on it, but.
Who?
Our guys can do it.
Who has tested the generators out there?
Steve and Chad.
Okay, so are they doing that on a yearly basis, six-month basis, or we just going out there, saying, hey, go out there and test, and what is our purity on that?
Probably, uh, every six months.
Okay, so even on the dehumidifier, which is internal, they're changing the filters, anything on there, right?
Should be.
So, that's what I, I, you go through here and see if we're doing already this, freezing and adjusting, or it changes, that should be your maintenance people doing that.
We can't get general maintenance done, Tabby?
I mean, that should be done by your general maintenance people here.
Power washer.
If there's anything, and then, then it should be just maintaining paint, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, the paint would be the biggest.
Well, not labels, can you get them?
Yeah.
We can order.
Our generators ain't even running, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This night, here ain't working long time.
They are, they're selling here, you talking about the, the city hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it in here for, we come to maintain it, and get it.
So, let's go back, we don't have a current schedule that we tell them every six months or whatever, and put it in kind of maintenance base and say.
They've never had a schedule to go by.
Right, okay. Cause then we're just gonna have to remember to do stuff.
They've never had a schedule to go by, can we write them one out? Yes, we can. Now, we, we can hire this company, or we can get a bid on just painting it, and have our guys do it.
Or is it made painted, that total fine, or just with the gravel leaves, or?
Every bit of it, if you're alive, look at it.
So we have to get, remove the dirt and everything around that side of the building?
That needs removing left off, no?
Yes, in my opinion, it does, yes.
Well, there right here, it says, remove, burn, let's burn it.
Well, if they paint it, you have to remove it.
But then, y'all say last week, it really wasn't supposed to even put up there or something?
It can be, it's an option, you can either burn it, or you can't, it's up to the.
But without it, you still the same, you take three hundred mile an hour, we in.
It's not gonna hurt you to get a bid and find out.
I agree.
You can have another, they, they, there, if, it's gonna be the lack we have.
Which I understand, yeah, if you got it there, you gonna have, uh, damp and rusted, but.
That's the only bad thing about it, sir. And then my.
I was trying to find out, I don't know.
It's running under the wall at, at McWhiggin.
Yeah, the water is.
Yeah.
Which, a lot of that could be caused by being burned, and the water running in behind it.
Seating down there, and finding a place to go. We're about to work the school, are we?
So, the first thing that needs to happen before you, cause you might get in there, and there could be rust underneath that dirt. So the first thing that needs to happen, you gonna have to get your crew out there and remove all the dirt.
Instead of.
Before you do any, get bids or anything.
They do like, they have to remove it.
Get it removed, then there's assessment of what you have, cause you don't know how bad it is underneath that dirt.
Right, I'm irresponsible for this here week, or the way down the school.
Both of them.
What about the school?
Yeah.
Not waiting for, for them.
So you need to put it on the schedule, get it removed, but the school's held up pretty good, I think, I mean, the doors on it's a little bit. But the rest of that, it all looks pretty good, I believe, from what I've seen.
Which they own it, so we, we.
They probably can make these guys up there or something.
So do y'all wanna get another bid from a local guy? Or do you wanna accept the bid from the safety shelter?
Unless I take two or three, for a month down.
Alright, need a motion to take bids on repainting. Doing the requirement.
Just put a paint and run ahead.
Well, I, you need to get the stuff removed, isn't it, cause you don't know how bad it's gonna be.
They're, they're gonna grind it down, they're gonna prime it if it needs primed, they're gonna have to, it's gonna be a painter, it ain't gonna be zonked out here off the street, I mean.
But, are we gonna, we, are we gonna be the one that removes that dirt and stuff, or we'll put that on? So we'll do that part, and then pressure wash it to see what's damaged, or if it need, if it even has it.
It does, I mean, it's, it's got damaged.
Well, did they tell us anything to paint a certain type, paint it with, any kind of sealer, to protect it from the lawnmower, or keep this happening worse?
No, the painter knows what they're gonna do.
I guess it's just common.
It is. Steel.
Steel.
Yeah.
Right, what y'all wanna do?
A rubber sealer, something.
I think you need to get the dirt away from it in the next couple of weeks, and then get your bidders in here to bid.
And then, then I wanna look at, pay it, I wanna look at that thirty-five hundred and ninety dollars and see what, uh, that person here will charge us to paint it. Then we make it round up.
Right. We can get all that done, and by the next meeting.
And say, that's for a shelter too, so you looking at seven thousand dollars for both.
That's right, that's right.
Well, actually, seven thousand and one hundred and eighty dollars.
Thirty-five ninety dollars is no painting.
I know, I know, that's what I'm saying, but see what he'll charge us to paint it.
Yeah. He's talking about maybe do that.
Twenty-three ten is what we look.
He's talking about maybe do an act, and add the paint, and add this.
Twenty-three hundred and ten dollars per house.
And see if it was coming out cheaper than fifty-nine hundred, that's what you're just talking about, yeah. That way you be getting your budget painted.
This, this covers all of it, so, I like that part of it.
I'm just saying, in my opinion, on the fifty-nine hundred prep and paint, they throw all this grease and clean and lubricate in to build that up to fifty-nine hundred. They're basically painting it for twenty-three ten.
Changing a few factors.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of that's split, where they can make money.
Where's twenty-three ten at, I'm gonna say.
If you have the twenty-three ten, take the thirty-five and ninety away from it.
Well, just ask them, we'll paint it for twenty-three ten, problems on, we can't give them enough of it.
So that really, that's, that's, that's the thing, I had to paint, and you. Half of it.
Yeah, but the good thing about it, that's not being.
But I thought, more disgusting, I was embarrassed, but all the paintings was done.
I know, the, the.
No, 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 who want the bed, bed, they won't turn in the bed and paint it, huh?
It should be bonded to a contract like anybody else, separate bids of it. Joe, tell me.
I think this is a good idea, but, no, I'm saying, to go ahead and, you know.
Well, I would say this may be done by a licensed contractor, in my opinion. An opinion, it's a lot.
So this man that goes and paints, and paints the water tanks and all the ass.
Yeah, has he got a license, got a licensed contract, and the condition, I'm all about helping out, I mean, you got a little situation, I ain't worried about helping him out, I'm worried about helping us out. I'd go out, while you're painting forty-five hundred dollar thing, we're gonna tell the license.
That's the reason I said, I always understood, that all hates to be done.
Well, not that.
If you don't even look at the paint and all, it's, it's be done. About somebody knows what they do.
Well, if y'all wanna do this one time, and we maintain it, then.
Well, makes you saying we don't maintain it now, and had it for eight years.
Well, we have.
And we were given that same stuff to maintain.
Who was?
The past administration, and they didn't do it. Cause it's not been any maintenance done on the shelters since they were put in. So what, what's, we can go out here and do all kind of contracts in the world, but if we don't have some kind of maintenance given, we're not gonna improve that process.
Well. I mean, when it becomes obvious that it's starting to rust, I mean.
Well, it's too late when it gets to that point.
Yeah, cause he's got one-year contract prep and paint, that's all his contract, and just prep and paint, for one year. See, they first got in, everything was new, and everything probably got overlooked the first few years, I mean, just taking it for granted. But we never did that as a town, kept up with all that, nor what, you know, I guess we could have looked at the prevention of all of it, but you'd think there'd be some kind of sealer you'd put on it, or.
I, I agree with everything y'all said, but the fact is, we have not done it, and we have to start doing it.
That's right, it's still bad.
So, we just need to decide what we're gonna do.
Pretty simple, ball, you don't run, paint it, run it in the paper two weeks, what you want done, take bids on.
Need a motion to take bids to.
What I think, what do you think? I mean, something without a mouth, don't, you don't wanna have to run it, to be legal, take bids, and, you know, that, right?
Boat, shelters all about a town.
I mean, I don't know. Well, I'm fair. I mean, we got their bid, we ain't got just a paint-only bid, you could get one of them from them, and then that would be one of them.
We did have a paint-only, but that, that's what they offer.
Paint-only on them?
That's, that's what they offer.
So they, that's gonna come in and paint it, okay.
Alright, need a motion to take bids on repainting boat, safety shelters that we all entail. The one in Wigan, ten of the one.
Option.
Fire, fire, maintenance, water department. Eugene, motion, second.
Second.
Kevin, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Don, opposes. Alright, motion passes. Item number four, check on status of open water box by Dove Jackson's property, part of a little bit of water department, you ready to accept it?
Did anybody, that's what I put it on here, did anybody say anything to them, or Greg about it?
I have.
Okay, well, I will.
What we need to look at is just getting Tim, Tim Cantrell, not Tim Cantrell, Tim on Frederick, to get a flat piece of steel, cut it out, if it's handles on it, we can just set it up there.
Is it a drain, or is it a?
Just a hole.
What is this, a big old four-by-four box, about it?
About the size of a pallet.
It's, it's similar to what's down at the pool. The covers off of it, too.
You look at the water.
I should, yeah, and I'll, I'll measure it, I'll.
It's for the bales of that.
If you don't, I'll just go ahead and see what it, said it'll cost too much, get him to fix it.
Alright, Donald, look that, the word in.
There used to be a metal cover on that yours.
That sure did. You found that, that five hundred, what, what, totally, it's less than that, get it built. It sure has, me too.
Up, down.
I figured.
She wrote something up, it's true, we got another that the pool, it needs to be one put on.
Well, we had both of them, we had on both of them.
So I need to sit at both of them.
Yeah.
I know, I don't hear much, still.
If you can, if you got somebody that can do each one for under five hundred dollars, tell them to take care of it.
Yep, yeah.
Well, we can spend that lot of votes on it, can't we? Yeah, we, so.
I can just measure them, see what size they are, and ask them what he charges, fits less than five hundred dollars.
Take a picture of them, you follow, maybe you have a picture, they'll know.
Yeah.
Alright, need a motion to, uh, have Donald look at these tomorrow, and.
Alright, you don't have to have a motion, you did. We don't have to have a motion, that do we?
You have to have a motion back, we gotta take that.
Huh, if it's below five hundred dollars?
Motion. Eugene, that's what we say.
I mean, it's what I said.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Darren, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, brings us to new business, uh, discuss getting bids on painting lines in the ballpark parking lot. Tabby, I guess that's you.
There's been a lot of individuals, um, voicing their concern about the parking arrangements at the, um, Field Three. Um, because of the several people being handicapped, and they can't get in there, I mean, it's terrible, the way pickleweaves in and out. That we need to do something about, striping it off, putting some lines out there, and, and actually make it better. Now, some of the, the guys said if we would get the paint, that they could probably stripe it off, and that would help on like, you know, I'm saying. But, we need to get a bid, I don't, I don't know who does that, actually, I don't know if Dixon, Avon does that, was their contractor.
I'm trying to think, I, I can't think of any ballpark around here that has a striped off parking lot.
Maybe if you just done two handicap right at the front, line it off the blue, and put a wheelchair thing on it, leave the rest of it off. Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, we gotta do something.
We could do that.
Sure, handicap.
If I could say this, I went a week ago Friday night, to see some of my Nettie boy. We got up there and parked, and we couldn't get out, because no one would leave a space at either side to get out, and then you was waving through the crowd, trying to get out of there, and there was no way.
Right. Huh?
Is that what the parking is to you now?
Wait a minute. Yeah, Field Three.
Would know how to.
It's not that, it's Field Three.
They're gonna lock it down, that's how like you look like, crumble, you don't work it up perfect.
Yeah, where the walking trails at.
They're really windy, it's going in.
That's correct, yes.
Somebody blocks up in there.
They block it all, obviously, can't get out.
You're looking at your price, I'm like, oh, for that, it was too much, you know?
We could probably call something, you know, parking in there, or something, cause people just piled in there the last second, and then park, try to find a parking spot.
They don't care how they talk.
Only get there to see junior play.
We. Well, it needs to be fishbowl, y'all want fishbowl parking is?
Do what?
It needs to be fishbowl parked. Instead of people parking this way, when you come in, fishbowl like this. And that, yeah, that's what, what it's called.
Could they have a volunteer out there to help park?
No. I mean, you'd have to have the parents stay out there the whole time and say, John, you know.
Mark off a spot for sure, for no parking, and then a handicap.
Leave a handicap for sure.
I'm making that, that is got to happen.
The easiest solution, I think, would be to do the handicap at front, and then as you come, you know where the walking trail is? Is put a stripe in there and have no parking, that way it would be a lane that can get you out, and then, that would be the cheapest, easiest route. For emergencies or something. Yeah, and say that's for the emergency exit of anybody with a child, or gets hurt, or anything like that.
Yeah, but you got one, one of those.
Rescue, if we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, things for doing, feel.
Yeah, the paint.
Yeah.
So Tabby, make a motion on the handicap. Three spots on the front.
If you get paint, I think, when Christian and Ed and Mels and them done the rain, or they done it themselves, so I think we. So I think we could get them to strap it off.
I went to the paint.
You just gotta hit the paint.
Yeah. It's still like the old thing.
Yeah, and they'll chalk it off and do it, cause they, you know.
We could use a paint gun, that'd be good. How much paint they reckon?
I love it, I'd love to find out.
They did fill candles, city parking lot with, with a rover and worked finally.
Right, that's what they did where they rolled.
Even the, even the handicap.
They rolled it on over there at Ranger, is what they did.
Didn't they?
Yeah, yeah.
They taped it off, right?
Mm-hmm, they came in and done their bid.
So we're talking about doing three handicap spots and doing a lane where no parking. All right, I need a motion.
Motion.
I mean, you need to tell us what we're doing.
We're gonna add three handicap accessible parking and an emergency exit lane.
That's good emergency, because see, if something was to happen, you gotta have a way to get that ambulance in and out now.
Or just to enter exit lane, I mean, you can't park here.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I didn't think about just having one way in and out in that big parking lot, that.
Well, it shouldn't, but people, people will block it.
But that hill's so big, it's hard to do anything else to get in and out there, I guess.
All right, Tabby made a motion, then second.
Second.
Darren, all in favor?
Carl, we'll need, um, if y'all got any of the um whatever it's called, um posts that they hang the signs on it, will actually display the handicap, y'all got some of those?
We'll just have to order some signs.
You know, we'll put the post in the ground and post it on it, cause we'll need three of those also.
Say what, you're gonna order it, Tabby?
Item number two. Everybody knows.
I think Virginia win, but I think it's gonna be tough.
Navy Day is coming up, April twenty-sixth and seventh. Everybody on the campus, all in the town employees are expected to work Friday night and Saturday.
So how late Saturday we're gonna have it, like last year's Saturday started opening up, breaking off, it's about three.
Nine, three.
And then Friday night, it's gonna go until?
Eight or nine?
Uh, usually nine, I think.
So the entertainment stuff, the singing mostly is gonna be towards Friday night, and then the mornings on Saturday?
Well, it'll be all day Saturday, but.
Do, do we know who the lineup is?
I have one spot that I haven't filled, but I think that uh we're gonna have an acoustic set for five to six on Friday night. Um, six to seven is uh Crossing Dixie. Seven to eight will be First Born Signs. And then at eight to nine is Creek, which is Steve Loveless. Uh, Saturday morning, Creek is gonna play again to begin with at nine. And at ten o'clock, we're gonna have Gary Rubble, who is uh one of the original Southern gentlemen. And he has written a book.
Oh, okay.
And he's gonna be here talking about his book at ten o'clock. Daryl suggested having like a roundtable discussion on the stage, let him come up and talk. Take wa- uh questions, but his book will not be released actually till May first. But he's bringing books to sell at Happelberg. And he's actually gonna give the town the first numbered book.
Well, we need to make sure that the community knows about this, because there's a lot of people interested in that book, I mean.
And he's uh, he's gonna talk for about an hour and.
You got a lot of information, Coach Ray.
I think, I think we should have people that actually knew Sonny James and about him sitting in on the discussion and.
That, that will be interesting.
Crossing Dixie, goes Baldwin, Handshake, Allis. And then a, a new guy, his name is Austin something, I can't remember his last name, I'm not looking at it.
Dexter got big on stick, didn't he?
Austin.
He was Nick something like that, but uh Eddie Pollard plays in his band.
He was at the ballgame the other night, Dexter was, yeah, but he's flying back out.
He, he can't play right now.
No, he's flying back out.
He's still in contact with the boys, I think.
Yeah.
But it, it sounds like some good entertainment.
He sure was good the Fourth of July, I mean.
Oh, yeah, he was.
It's hard to believe he could be that good live, I mean, you know, like that, but he, he's a real Vico. I wish he'd win it.
All right, uh item number three, discussing everybody again.
Which win?
We really need to have a meeting, if everybody could. Um work session. Find out where we're at. Um work on raising money, just the entire.
Door prize is.
You're talking about Daryl with some other people too, that's been involved, that's helping us, stuff like that, getting invited.
I mean, the work session's open to the public, but yeah.
I have the t-shirts.
Who's gonna help do what, to figure out how to get them out. I mean, we need, yeah, definitely need that, because it's just hard, everybody show up at different times up there, we don't know what needs to be done, or this or that, I mean, we get organized before, it maybe would be such a, you know.
Tell me about it, I've had to run power the last ten years by myself, well, me and.
Me and Tim, me and Daryl was out there all day that day.
Man, he ain't done it.
We was done it, we've run it, we've run all the power, we're on the road.
I think Paulus has been done all that.
Okay, we're gonna be better this year, let's, let's move on.
Well, they call you a politician so long, when that comes later.
I reckon.
And two, since the twenty-seventh, do we want to do something special at the end for the tornado memorial? Cause it's the same day.
How many years?
Two years now. Yeah.
And I did order the shirts, they uh working on them now, and that is a gray shirt. Has black and gold on it, cause Don thought that we needed school colors. And it did look good with the school colors on it, and it's the. I don't have it with me, the, the fella that drew it, the little boy that drew it, it's like he did, and uh it's got his little saying on it, but it's gonna be a, a pretty shirt, I think.
What if you release them? Well, then, what if it be eight balloons and then however many victims? And just sell that many red or white balloons, or helium, just turn that loose, what'd be twenty or something like that?
Eighteen people died, didn't they?
Add that to the eight years, and that'd be twenty-six balloons, just turn that loose and.
Well, they did the, are they doing the uh human cross? That's always done one day.
Yeah, it's always done.
We need to see what's going on and find out from the local churches.
Ranger work on that also?
Heard anybody mention it.
Usually Steve Hood and the fire department take care of that.
Well, I'm at work, so I fit Thursday and Friday, so I'm off tonight, before you on today.
When we get to the work session, we'll have some more answers.
I got the saw, I couldn't already move.
How about we have a work session April eighteenth at six o'clock, can everybody make it?
April what?
Eighteenth, the Thursday.
See, we can do this one on our, on our FaceTime.
It'd be good so everybody can show up.
Yeah.
What, do you know what day it's on?
It's Thursday, that night too.
You'll be good with that?
Yep.
We need to be getting donations and. Door prizes.
You can, no, you could start it on our website.
I mean, people will get it.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a website that you he's mentioned about having it on the, getting the message out on our website, which is Happelberg yeah, Happelberg, whatever it is, dot com. They can put a link on there and have that uploaded onto it with the flash.
On Facebook too.
Yeah, Carl.
Just getting everybody to share, and you know, more, more people, that's gonna help everything, vendors to sales.
Well, it's a little bit late on vendors at that point.
I mean, it's gonna help a lot, the more people there, the more money they make and stuff, but last year, I know we had a, a page that had like a picture on it and stuff, but it really didn't get a lot of detail about.
No.
You know, cause people was like, well, where's the car show, or are they gonna have, you know, too many, if we put all that information on there, it's gonna make it.
I hope that uh Mr. England is gonna be able to help with the uh lawnmower pool, he's planning on it, but his wife is in ICU. She's real sick right now.
Gary Ray will have the car sale back behind the market again, um.
And we can get on the radio and plug it.
Who is that?
Oh. Yeah, they live up in Farooq. And Carrie Cochran, she was asking anybody.
What ward do they live? It says on the seat.
We took them in to the, to the.
That's who Kim absolutely voted into the.
Are you sure?
Big brown house up there. On the left side.
How far is it, Darren?
Before you get into the dark gravel.
Yeah, the White House on the corner, right there.
I sure didn't know it was in.
Well, that's, that's gonna be Jordan Baptist's house.
I also might have something too, more time on it, every time.
So you should get access to everything, you know, water.
You asked it when he brought it to us.
All right. So we're good, April eighteenth, so everybody can be here. Item number four, discuss maintenance on the senior building. Carla, do you know what shoes they've done for that one?
They didn't tell me.
I know, I know the exit lights are out, they've gotta be replaced. Um.
They've always had trouble with one of the bathrooms, isn't it the ladies bathroom?
Bailey, Bailey just said that Beth had called over here and said we need to do a little maintenance over there, so.
Today?
Uh, I don't know if she called today, but she told me today.
She was mad today, cause whoever had it left it in the mess. I told her that my, my mayor said he wanted me to make sure she cleaned it up.
Well, there's a lot of times when people have noted that it's not very clean.
Well, that should be what their deposits are.
If they don't clean it, somebody.
I mean, when they rent it, it's not as clean as it should be when they go in it.
Well, that's our director.
That's right.
Now, if she needs any maintenance done, she'll be able to just call her, and we got two of them employees, don't we? We're talking about them doing maintenance on our storehouse, how they gonna do it on that, people do it on senior building?
Well, they gotta.
Well, I'm getting that, that's what I don't understand.
They gotta be called if she called today.
Well, I under- I understand that.
Talk to her, so I wouldn't know what else she made.
Understand all that.
Um, I don't think we're gonna have a motion there.
Whole system proposal for right here. How much generator, what is that?
They will come and service our generators for the city hall. Oil change, food change. They are, they're the ones that normally come and do the maintenance on it. So I'm just gonna give y'all an invoice of what they, or a bid proposal that they sent out.
Tabby, who's that?
Make sure y'all are okay with it.
We got to the chip.
If everybody's good with that, I'll call them tomorrow and have them do that. Maybe if we don't make things.
You're not right.
Yeah, Tyler's pretty sensitive, yeah.
We don't want to come here, so.
All right, Gray and Ravel.
May I ask you?
Got two on here, you got Whitey Cochran. And Santa and Carrie Cochran. Need a motion to approve Gray and Ravel.
Someone?
What do we, Grandy Ravel?
Well, on, on.
Carrie's.
And Santa and Carrie's were just delivering ground.
Yeah.
Those, and we got a Gray and Ravel.
On a paved road?
Why would you ask pave them?
He ain't got it.
Paved driveway?
Same pavement, blue?
I had him down it though, man.
Oh, okay. He specifically asked for a person? We don't do that.
Did he?
He's gonna be off for a while, you know, his, his mother passed.
We're gonna send you flowers and things like that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that after the meeting. All right, need a motion to adjourn, well, nobody gave me a motion here, Don gave a motion and a second.
I don't get to all that, Ravel. No second.
Anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna look, yes, I'm Carrie, if that's going in his house, and maybe I'm wondering if this stuff's asphalt, if it's. It's, well, if it's got slag on, I think it's got slag on.
He wants it specifically dumped in a certain area, he always asks.
He wants it in his potholes, they won't.
I'm voting no one.
He always asks for Steve to deliver it for some reason.
Put it in an old way. Here's Steve.
Steve ain't gonna be here, though.
You need to go, uh, put everybody else's other gears.
Oh, it's about to seven.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Eugene, second, Kevin. All in favor?
I don't think.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.